Yeah.
Testing. Is it good? Okay. All right, I'm gonna.
Recording in progress.
Great, then I will call to order the July fourteenth Planning Commission meeting with a roll call, please. Yeah, who's gonna?
Chair Brown Eyes.
Here.
Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Commissioner Osterman.
Here.
Commissioner Krantz.
Here.
Thank you very much. With that, a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. And we'll do a motion to approve minutes from the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
I'll move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, were you? You're abstaining on that one, right? Right. So with three of us here who were here for the June twenty-third meeting, for the minutes, do we?
So I think you just need to have a cor- you just have to have a majority of those present to pass anything. I don't think you need a majority of those who are at the previous meeting, so I think you can pass it.
Okay, great. Motion carries, thank you for clarifying that. And then I'd like to open the floor for a public comment for items that are not on this evening's agenda. So if you want to speak of something that's not on the agenda, we would welcome that at this time. If we can double-check the Zoom.
Yes, we have two people in attendance. Neither of them are raising their hands at this time.
Okay. If you're joining us by Zoom, you'll want to use the raise hand function as we work our way through the evening. All right, so then we will move into our first item of business. I will now open the public hearing on a request for a LMC amendment to the Louisville Municipal Code, Resolution Eight, Series Twenty-Twenty-Two, which recommends approval of an amended draft ordinance, amending the Louisville Municipal Code, Chapter Seventeen dot seven-six, regarding inclusionary housing requirements. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the Planning Commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the Planning Commission of Staff. In this case, Staff is also the applicant. After these presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting in person, by computer, or telephone, may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to use the raise hand function if you're on Zoom and participating by computer, or a star nine if you're calling in by telephone. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing, and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the Commission decides to reopen the hearing. The Planning Commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Do we have proper notification?
Yes, and I just want to note that this was noticed as a new public hearing, so this did receive a separate notice than the prior hearing that we did in June.
And do we have any conflicts of interest, disclosures, from commission members? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Great. Well, good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, again, tonight we're here to consider a Louisville Code amendment that would amend our inclusionary housing requirements. So as noted earlier, on June ninth, you all considered an ordinance that was similar to this but had a few substantive differences. And you probably remember that that ordinance required thirty percent inclusionary housing when a property is rezoned from a non-residential district to one that allows residential uses. That draft did not apply to residential units developed in its own district that allows housing through SRU. It included a fee-in-lie option, and it did not include policy support for rezoning of the property. So those, that was the kind of the basis of the previous ordinance. And then just as far as background, you remember then that in twenty-eighteen, the city endorsed the Boulder County Regional Housing Partnership Regional Housing Strategy, and that set a countywide goal of twelve percent housing permanently affordable countywide by twenty-thirty-five. This included both a mix of new housing as well as preserving and acquiring existing housing stock. Following this, in June twenty-twenty-one, City Council adopted an ordinance that requires a minimum of twelve percent of all new housing be deed-restricted affordable. This ordinance allows a fee-in-lie option. It allows to build onsite or acquire offsite, dedicate land in lieu of providing, or enter an alternative agreement that provides equivalent affordable housing in the city in some other means. Following the adoption of this ordinance, Staff presented a discussion to City Council regarding incentive options that could increase the amount of affordable housing in the city. At that time, in August last summer, City Council directed the development of a housing study and discussion through the Comprehensive Plan process on possible incentives in areas within the city that could support additional affordable housing. Following that, the city staff applied for and received a DOLA grant, Department of Local Affairs, for a housing study of sixty thousand dollars. We had intended to kick this off right away in twenty-twenty-two, but due to Marshall Fire, we have postponed this till later, very late this year and primarily into twenty-twenty-three. So with all of that background, tonight's ordinance for consideration, it has a few fundamental differences, and I'm going to go through the components of this ordinance. It continues to be within the City Council work plan for twenty-twenty-two, so ultimately, this ordinance was directed by City Council. It requires thirty percent inclusionary housing when a property is rezoned from a non-residential zone district to one that allows residential uses. It does apply to property with residential uses approved through a special review use. So there are certain commercial zone districts that, you know, it's not a by-right use, but it allows it through SRU, so this would now apply to them, as well as it applies to property that is subject to a general development plan that includes residential uses or an amendment. So for example, if there's a new general development plan that establishes residential uses that previously was commercial and now would include residential, then the thirty percent would apply. Or if there's an increase to such units, then it would apply to the increase, as well as it removes the fee-in-lie option and requires onsite units. So there's no fee-in-lie option anymore. The units have to be provided onsite. As well, one of the primary differences in this ordinance is that it added a new rezoning criteria in Section Seventeen forty-four fifty. This section of our code is our declaration of policy for rezoning, and the new language is on the slide. So the area to be rezoned is rezoning from a commercial land use to a land use that includes residential, and the property owner elects to permanently deed-restrict thirty percent of the new residential onsite as affordable housing. So provided, right, it was commercial and going to residential, and the property owner elects to that, then that provides policy support to rezone property from commercial to residential. For the purposes of this subsection, rezoning also includes any approval of any amendment under the city zoning code that would increase the area of a property on which residential uses are allowed, or to the extent of such increase. Just for a little context, we included a map to the zoning map in the webs, in the packet, but that was, this is a little more clear. And so basically, what is shown in red overlaying on the city zoning map is any of the zone districts that are, have a commercial land use designation. And so now, basically, any of these areas within the city could find that policy support in the rezoning criteria. And so you can see it's a fairly large percentage. We continue to note that this ordinance, approval of this ordinance does not change existing comprehensive plan or small-area plan policies for each particular land, property. And so amendments to the applicable plan would still be required as part of the process for the applicant to go through the rezoning. Additionally, we provided some comparison for surrounding jurisdictions, just for a little bit of background. This is a high-level summary of their standards. There's some nuances within each of these, but generally, Denver requires ten percent for thirty more units. Boulder is twenty-five percent for any project more than five. Broomfield has a fee program, there's entirely fee-based. Longmont is twelve percent. Lafayette has a fee-based program, and Superior is fifteen percent for ten or more units. And so we can talk about this if this helps you understand where this would fall with our surrounding neighbors. And then we continue to highlight that we have not, as the city of Louisville, done a financial feasibility analysis on this. And so the closest research we have is related to Denver, and we presented this on June ninth. But it's the feasibility analysis reflecting within the Denver market what percentage can be absorbed without additional incentives. And generally, that shows roughly ten to twelve percent. And so with that, we are happy to answer any questions you have, and we're recommending approval of this resolution.
Commissioner Moline?
Thanks very much, Lisa. I have a few questions. I'm wondering if you wouldn't mind if we went back to one of the, to some of your slides
Yeah, absolutely.
that discussed what the ordinance would do?
Yes.
One of the ones that I remember I wanted to ask about was the GDP. So in, let's say a GDP is roughly split, like it already has some residential component, but, and so it would only be, this would only apply to the areas of the GDP that are, that would be rezoned, I guess you would say, from the commercial to the, to the?
It applies to the percent, like the number getting increased, right? My understanding, and Director, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but say if there's fifty units already permitted, those fifty units aren't subject to the thirty percent. They're subject to the twelve percent that already is in place. But if the fifty goes to eighty, then that incremental thirty is subject to the thirty percent? Is that, okay, does that make sense? So that the percent, the portion that is getting increased, that's subject to the thirty percent. The existing entitled keeps, stays at the twelve percent.
Got it, I think. And so remind me again, in GDPs, there might be some general outline of where a particular grouping, like kind of the zoning would be
Yeah.
in these general development plans. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't really apply by those geographic or spatial areas. It would more apply to the overall numbers of the whole?
It may or may not apply to a geographic area. If the geographic area is outlined in a general development plan, then you could look at it if it's, you know, kind of expanding into a certain area, or if it's really, if it's only an allocation, then it could apply to an allocation. So, you know, GDPs are always, you know, pretty nuanced and pretty particular in how they're written, and so we'll have to make sure that we evaluate each case against the ordinance.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I think I had a couple more questions, but I might need the
Sure.
your, to pull up that section of your presentation to?
Okay. If we could, Nancy, change it to the the lectern, the presentation camera, there we go. There we go.
Yeah, this was the one, okay, where it talked about GDP. Could you go back one more, maybe? Well, I'll have to.
We also have the rezoning criteria and the map. This was the one that
Okay.
So it's the thirty percent for non-commercial or non-residential that now applies to NSRU, and the general development plans are part of this as well.
Okay, I guess I do have, I mean, this, this is maybe a broader question than just this particular comment on the ordinance, but, I mean, in some ways, we're, in general, in Boulder County, we're out of balance with jobs versus housing. And so I'm wondering if Staff has considered, if we, if we're trying to just solve some of the housing, some of that imbalance, are we, as we creep up in this, you know, as we creep up from twelve to thirty, are we at risk of just reducing the amount of housing that could get proposed in some of these commercial areas? I mean, if we really want to try and add more housing to the region which has this jobs-housing imbalance, I mean, have we, have we considered at what point, if we raise this percentage so high that we aren't really going to get much participation? And then have we really then worked on the, on the kind of housing?
Yeah, I understand the scope of your question, and I know we talked about that quite a bit on June ninth. So, you know, is essentially, I guess I'm going to maybe summarize your, your question is, is this almost a disincentive, you know, to development of housing because this is a barrier, you know, that is?
Right.
Is it, I don't know if I'm
Yeah, that you are, you are.
summarizing that, okay? Okay. You know, we would have to do additional local study and local feasibility analysis in order to really understand the thresholds as to what level a certain project can absorb and what level it becomes a barrier. And it might be property-to-property specific. You know, there might be some properties where, given the development capacity on a lot, it might be perfectly fine, and then there could be others where this could be a barrier.
Okay.
But we have not done that study.
Okay, thank you. And then I think my last one, thank you, commission members, for indulging me. The timing of when City Council plans to take this up and the timing of the housing study that, yeah, remind me again of, do you know those?
City Council included this on their, kind of, I think it was Q-two, Q-three work plan items, so they requested that this come forward,
Okay.
you know, this summer, and the housing plan is not set to kick off until at least, you know, late, late this year. But most likely, the majority of that work in the report would come out in twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Commissioner Krantz?
Oh, sorry, Osterman.
Just a follow-up question on that about the housing study. So you said that to really be able to answer the question, we would need a local feasibility analysis. Will that be included in the housing study that's planned?
We haven't set the final scope for the housing study. We haven't developed all of the entire scope, but we do hope to include. And that scope does get approved by City Council. It would be reviewed by DOLA, you know, just to make sure it's consistent with the grant funds that we receive. But we do assume that there would be, you know, some level of feasibility, an evaluation of incentives, evaluation of locations in town. So it would be certainly multifaceted, but I think feasibility is a key component of that.
Any additional questions for Lisa at this time?
I've got two questions.
Yeah.
One of them is, I just wanted to clarify, because in our last meeting, we were discussing whether or not this aligned with state law.
Right.
And I think that now, I just want to clarify that now that we have this additional incentive, adding another, another criteria to allow for rezoning, that we have created an incentive and that we, I felt like it aligned with state law before, but that we are clear that it is, that there's no question about it aligning with that House Bill eleven-seventeen.
We'll be relying on, I think, our city attorney's advice on that when we get to City Council as far as the applicability of the state law relative to the amendment.
One of the things that we didn't talk about was like our capacity to absorb growth
Yeah.
in the town. And so like, I was just thinking that it's, I've only heard one number before, which was that we can have an additional population of three thousand. I heard that in a different City Council meeting. And I'm wondering if we have any other numbers that would say how much additional growth our city is? That comprehensive plan doesn't give a number.
Yeah, we don't have a cap, a residential cap within our, we, I think the city's had those types of policies in the past, but we don't currently have any policy with an actual residential cap.
Any other questions?
Regarding the, so thirty percent of dwelling units?
Yes.
How is that, so it's, that seems like it's an undefined kind of number as to how one calculates that ultimately, when you have multiple different, you have three-bedroom units, two-bedroom units, one-bedroom studio?
Sure. So our code defines, you know, what is a dwelling unit, and basically, a dwelling unit is kind of a contained unit that is intended to house, you know, the definition of our family, right? And so the form and shape of those within our code can vary greatly, right? It can be an apartment within a multifamily unit to a single-family home, all on a lot, and it could be any, kind of, any of the types of units that exist and are allowed for in our code. I think, you know, the broader ordinance that was previously approved sets forth that the design and the intent of the inclusionary units need to match and be consistent with the remainder of the units. And so really, we would look at that on kind of a case-by-case basis. So if this is an apartment building with, you know, a mix of two- and three-bedroom units, then the affordable units would likely also be kind of the proportional mix of two- and three-bedroom units, and they would need to be designed consistently. If it's a mix of townhomes and single families, you know, then we would probably do in kind of a, we would look at, you know, probably a roughly proportional mix of the townhomes and single families. But really, it's intended to integrate them consistently within the, within and throughout the development so that visually and design-wise, there's, it's not like the affordable units are all tiny and over here, and everything else is over here, and it's very distinct and different. They're really intended to integrate. Does that answer your question?
Thanks.
Okay.
Also, how, with a deed-restricted sale, who kind of oversees that, determines the current price for that unit and ensures that it is sold at that price?
That's a really good question. So the city is in working, ultimately, we are still developing a lot of those procedures internally. We are working on a partnership with neighboring jurisdictions to develop consistency in our both covenants and then the processes and the standards for which we administer this program. And ultimately, we'll be relying on some of our partner jurisdictions for advice and guidance on the programs that are already in place. And so we haven't to date had any units get built, so we'll figure out some of this as we go. Go ahead.
And I would say it's possible we'll actually intern to an IGA with some of these jurisdictions to administer portions of the program for us, since they have a lot more expertise in the area.
The Boulder County Commissioners recently approved a portion of the ARPA funding in order to support the first few years of this inclusionary housing partnership through the IGA to support the administration of the program, particularly for communities like Erie, Lafayette, Louisville's Superior, who don't have programs, so it's really intended to kind of get us on our feet.
Any additional questions?
Can I follow up on Chair Brown Eyes's first question?
Yeah.
Isn't the, isn't the way that the inclusionary housing is to be built codified already in our ordinance that calls for the twelve percent?
Yes. Yeah, all of the standards I was just talking about was approved back last year, so.
Those would apply to?
Yes, the thirty percent. Yeah, the new ordinance says basically that same design standard and criteria applies to these thirty percent units as well.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. And actually, if we can start with a motion to add the written public comments in the form of, we're calling it Addendum Two internally, that we've received by email.
So moved.
All right, and a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So I'd like to welcome up people, I think we have comment cards, we can?
We do. Would you like me to?
Yeah, could you call them out and then also tell them who's up next? And then I guess we got three people in person here, and then we'll switch to Zoom maybe after that.
Sounds good. We'll start with Jordan Engel and then Tiffany Boyd on deck.
Hello, everyone. So I'm Jordan Engel.
Let's make sure the microphone is working.
Oh, I see. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, you can stand like normal.
Okay. I'm Jordan Engel. I'm a twenty-three-year-old post-grad living at nineteen thirty-four Oxford Lane in Louisville eight zero zero two seven. I'm here to express my support of increasing affordable housing from twelve to thirty percent. Doing this will allow people like myself to work and live long-term in Louisville. Such a change has so many positive implications, and to touch on what I think is the most important one is reducing our carbon footprint. Being in close proximity to my work cuts down on transit time and not having to rely on personal transportation. Currently, I work a job at Target, and I have two roommates. And currently, that's the only reason I'm allowed to live out here, because it splits the rent up so much. So my rent's very cheap and compared to what, and comparatively to what others have to pay, it's, it's completely an outlier. Therefore, you know, I can safely rely on busing, biking, and occasionally Ubering, because my work is close by. My own personal carbon footprint is much lower than what others is currently. And increasing affordable housing to thirty percent would have massive reductions on Louisville's carbon footprint. Even if a marginal increase of people worked where they reside, moving forward with these changes sooner rather than later is in everyone's best interest, I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name's Tiffany Boyd, and I live at five-five-zero Grant Avenue here in Louisville. I think this amendment is really exciting for a lot of reasons. For one, when you look at the comprehensive plan for our city, there are so many goals around equity, diversity, and inclusion, and also around sustainability. And increasing from twelve to thirty percent for those properties that are rezoned from commercial to residential really succeeds in achieving a lot of these parts of our comprehensive plan. It's a great idea for many reasons. First and foremost, Louisville is way behind in trying to achieve our twelve percent by twenty-thirty-five. Right now, we're about a thousand housing units behind on trying to get to that goal. So if we keep incrementally, just keeping it at twelve percent, we're not going to get there. It's interesting to look at the comparisons of regional communities, and I think setting this goal at thirty percent is going to, first of all, send a message that we are an inclusionary town, that we welcome people, that we want people to live and work in the same place. So I think increasing it to thirty percent achieves a lot of those goals. Secondly, and Jordan touched on this, about the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. When we have denser living, we have reduced greenhouse gas emissions. We have opportunities for people to be neighbors from a wider income span. And there are just so many reasons why increasing it to thirty percent will increase a lot of the EDI goals and the sustainability goals of our community. And third, I feel like this kind of regional cooperation that you were talking about, working with other communities to make sure that we're moving forwards towards this twelve percent, it keeps Louisville in the mix. If we don't increase it to thirty percent, we're just not going to get there. And there are so many reasons why this is a wonderful amendment for our community, and I encourage you to agree. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
So next, we have JoJo Fulmer, and then Anne-Marie Jensen on Zoom is on deck.
Hi, my name is JoJo Fulmer, and I live at three-two-five Buchanan Court in Louisville. I believe that it is really important to pass this ordinance because delaying it would mean we would be missing out on vital opportunities to increase the amount of affordable housing in Louisville. Affordable housing is so important here because of how expensive housing is, and having affordable housing ensures that more people will be able to afford living here and thus will allow Louisville to become a more equitable, diverse, and inclusive town. And the reason why we need this ordinance now is because there are several places in Louisville that could get rezoned through this ordinance to have 30% affordable housing. And if this opportunity is missed, then those places will not have as much affordable housing, and it'll be a huge opportunity lost. And with how little area there is left to grow in Louisville housing-wise, we can't really afford to delay this or else there is basically no hope in achieving that 12% of total housing being affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so next, we have Anne Marie Jensen on Zoom, and we have given permission.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Anne Marie Jensen, and I'm the Executive Director of the East County Housing Opportunity Coalition. We are an affordable housing education and research, training, and advocacy group, and we serve the communities east of Boulder in Boulder County. And you've had some very good witnesses who have said some of the things that I was going to say, but I think the most important thing is that, you know, commercial development has really changed in the last five years because of the internet, because of the pandemic, and a lot of commercial developments are struggling. And so this is an opportune time to look at the rezoning issue and to be thoughtful about it. And we are really grateful for the city of Louisville for doing this. The homework that we've done shows that 30% mandatory is about as high as anyone goes nationwide. And while we think it's a great number, one of the things we're worried about is that in the studies we've looked at nationwide, in addition to the 30% requirement, there are also incentives in most places. 57% of communities that have an inclusionary housing ordinance also give some kind of incentives to developers to try to make this work for them. And we are not apologists for developers, and we are not advocates for developers. We are advocates for affordable housing. But we fear a little bit that what you guys talked about earlier, that this might make developers not do the projects. One of the things we're seeing around the county is a lot, because of high construction costs right now, a lot of developers and communities that do have inclusionary housing are choosing the fee and lieu because of high construction costs. Since you don't have in this ordinance the fee and lieu, and I actually think that's fine, not, don't have a problem with that, but the question is whether or not developers are going to bite. And so I would just suggest that you need to include some additional incentives or at least have them as options that staff can offer developers to try, when they come to staff and, you know, are looking into a project, there may be options that require special review by council or other things, but that you can offer to create incentives, such as density bonuses, parking restrictions, moving up in the development approval process. Some of those kind of things are what nationwide other communities are doing, and we think that will sweeten the pot a little and make sure that developers take advantage of this opportunity. So we support you, we thank you. One other thing, and your current ordinance says that, I think the language is substantially similar or something like that on the housing. And I would just say, you know, in talking to developers, if you could make for less finishes, maybe for MICA instead of, you know, granite countertops, things like that that are not really visible on the outside, that too would be another incentive that might help developers to want to do this. They are in it to make money, and if they don't make enough money, we fear they won't do it. So, but we really appreciate what you're doing. We think this is a very creative approach, and we thank you very much for entertaining this.
And thank you for joining us this evening.
We have one other online participant who has raised his hand. If you're ready, okay, Joshua Cooperman. And hold on one second. Okay, Joshua, I have unmuted you on our end.
Hello. This is Josh Cooperman. I live at 216 Griffith Street in Louisville. I am generally quite supportive of this ordinance for a variety of reasons, many of which have already been discussed. First and foremost, I support this ordinance because very clearly, there is a desperate need for more affordable housing, not only in Louisville, but in our region and in much of the nation at wide. And I think we should take it upon ourselves to, you know, to try to provide some of that affordable housing. Secondly, I think that this ordinance would go very far in, in helping with, or helping us to achieve some of our aims in terms of equity, diversity, and inclusion. If we, you know, if we don't have enough affordable housing in town, there are a lot of people who won't be able to live here, and that will make our community less equitable, less diverse, and less inclusive. The, the third reason I support this ordinance is for reasons of environmental sustainability. As a few of the previous speakers noted, if people can live close to where they work, then they don't have to commute so much, and that reduces their carbon footprint. Also, if we, you know, if we develop these affordable units in ways that, in certain ways, for instance, if they're denser, or if we make them in, in sections of the city that are very walkable or bikeable, or we achieve that when, when they're developed, we'll be making more sustainable communities. I'd also like to say that I, I think that this, I really like the, the intent of this ordinance because in Louisville, there's so little land remaining that is zoned residential. And so if we want to be able to achieve some of our aims for affordable housing, I think the only way to do that is to rezone. And I think there's a, quite a lot of opportunity to rezone in, in the city. Finally, I'd just like to say, you know, 30% sounds a little bit like a stretch, or it might seem a little bit like a stretch. I'm not an expert to really be able to say whether or not it is. I think it would be great if we could achieve 30%, but I also would not, would be happy if we offered incentives to developers so that they were more able to achieve the 30%. And some of those incentives could actually be beneficial for sustainability, for instance. So I hope you, I hope you agree that this ordinance is a good idea and send it on to City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And do we have any additional participants by Zoom at this point?
There is no one else online, and I think we've captured everybody.
All right, thank you. Lisa, do you have any response that you wanted to make to any of the issues that were raised?
I don't have any formal response to any of them unless you all have questions that have arisen from.
Oh, yeah, so additional questions for Lisa. I am, I would like to hear a little bit more about potential incentives and what has been discussed.
So as I noted in the presentation, on August 24th last summer, staff presented a new number of different incentives that other cities consider as part of their inclusionary programs. And at that time, City Council did not adopt any of those incentives and just directed the evaluation of all incentives as part of the housing study. And so to date, there are no incentives on the table within this ordinance, and it, you know, other than if you would consider the policy support for rezoning. And we don't have anything calendared, you know, with City Council other than this ordinance at this time prior to the housing study.
You know, I would just add, and you, you may be able to speak to this in more detail also, Lisa, like incentives often could include density bonuses if you hit different targets for affordable housing. There could be parking waivers are often thought of as incentives. And I don't know if Lisa wants to add.
Yeah, so I think, so commonly incentives include height. Maybe you get additional story or two of height, landscape reductions, sometimes reducing the landscape area, parking reductions, you know, different financial incentives, maybe fee waivers, fee reductions on permits, or expedited review times. Those tend to be, I think, the most common incentives as part of programs and as well as, you know, some of the public commenters, I think, referenced, and, you know, other ideas for incentives as well.
Great. Mr. Mullin?
So I, I'm trying, I'm trying to make this a question and not a comment, so. I guess what I'm hearing a little bit is some concern on the part of, of our residents, perhaps City Council, that there are these, you know, proposed developments that, that are coming to us that, that this could apply to, and that that is part of the reason where, why people would like to see this ordinance adopted as soon as possible. I guess, for reasons we can talk about in a few minutes, I'm, I'm still sort of struggling with it. But I guess a question, if we were so concerned about that, could we not just put a moratorium on, some kind of a moratorium on development that allowed the ordinance to, to kind of move through a process and get caught up and still then apply to some of these properties that we're worried about are going to get developed? Is that a possibility?
There are certainly, time, from time to time, cities adopt moratoriums while they have development, you know, amendments underway in order to, you know, kind of prohibit applicants from moving forward while the cities have these discussions. So that's certainly something that hasn't been the direction we've received, but could be a tool.
Okay, all right, thanks. I just wanted to check on that. Thank you very much.
Additional questions? Have any other questions? All right. I will now close the public hearing, and planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to begin?
I, I guess I will, if, unless somebody else wants to jump ahead of me, but I'm, I'm happy to, to just tell you, Chair Commissioners, where I'm at on this. I, I first off, really appreciate the comments that we heard this evening. I have family members who are in the same boat and are probably not able to afford to live in this town right now. And so this is a, an issue that I feel is really important to many people in the town and in the community. So wholeheartedly agree with the intent of making some headway in this town on inclusionary housing. I just absolutely want to see the town make some movements on that. I, I continue to, to be troubled just a bit about supporting this ordinance when I'm just concerned that we're setting a target that doesn't, I don't know, that, that doesn't feel like we've been able to confirm with a local study here that, that this is the right target for us to hit. And it, it's even higher than Boulder, and Louisville is a very different town than Boulder. So I, again, I guess that's sort of where I keep ending up on this, is very supportive of, of where the town would like to go with this. And an ordinance such as this, I just am a little concerned about the specifics. I do also think the town really needs to explore some of the ways that, that sort of density bonus, some of those other incentives that we could use to, to ensure that it's, that it's, that the ordinance is going to deliver what we want, which is inclusionary housing. I, I'm concerned that we set our high, our site so high or a target so high that we may sort of not price ourselves out, but just sort of, you know, narrow our ability to, to do the work that we'd like to do. So that, that remains my concern.
Thank you. Commissioner Grants? Commissioner Osterman?
Yeah, I, I feel like this is a good idea to pass this ordinance.
Is your mic on? Sorry.
Oh, yeah, maybe move it a little bit closer. Sorry about that. Yeah, and I am not sure that without it, we will have a policy path for any rezoning at all. Because now that I looked back on the zoning section that sets the criteria for rezoning, our code really strongly discourages it unless there's been an error or unless we're, it's part of an annexation, or there's been extreme change in, in the area surrounding it. So I feel like this actually adds an opportunity for a developer to elect to offer this 30% and change the zoning. I know, I understand there's still some more hoops to jump through for a developer regarding the small area plans and our comprehensive plan, but I think that this is a, is a very large incentive because our, it increases the value of the property, and I wish I did have numbers on that, but I do believe that residential property is more valuable zoned residential than it would be zoned commercial, especially since, given some of the comments that I think Ms. Jensen made in, in her public comment. So I think that this is going to, that by passing this will allow a way forward to rezone things.
Commissioner Osterman?
Sure, thank you. So my position on this has not changed since our last meeting. I think that a lot of the questions, the issues that we uncovered during the last meeting still apply. For me in particular, the fact that the 30% level is not substantiated by any analysis, any data. If anything, the comparison with other nearby cities worries me even more to see that 30% is much higher. It's unprecedented when we look at our neighbors. So, so basically, in short, I want to see more inclusionary housing in Louisville. This, I am very concerned that this is going to have the opposite effect. Just because we require 30% doesn't mean that that's what we'll get. I think what that means is that we will simply have developers look at it as financially not viable, and then we won't get any new housing, which I'm very concerned will only exacerbate the problem that we currently have. So that's the reason why I, I do not support this resolution at this time. I'm very interested in seeing the results of the housing study, seeing what the feasibility analysis indicates, incentives that can be thrown in, because I think that this needs to be approached in a very delicate way, where we are working, where the city is working together with, with developers, with the public to ensure that we strike the right balance. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm also remain concerned about this potential that it could end up being kind of a de facto moratorium on additional housing. But I'm also, so kind of a few different things for us to discuss, though, kind of procedurally, since this is a municipal code that we're discussing here. Like, conditions aren't really conditions, but they can be discussion points or concern, notes of concern that we pass on to City Council surrounding any number of different issues within the proposal as it's currently written. And I don't know what those exactly might look or sound like. So much of the focus is on that 30%, right? That's what we've been focused on discussing for so long. I'm also concerned by those numbers. We see what other people have tried to do in the area. And knowing too that a lot of the development that I've seen in Boulder over the years has been higher density, much taller buildings than we're probably wanting to have here. And so I think there is something within that as to how you can afford more when you're building something for development. more affordable units. And that if we require that to try to happen at a lower level of floors, that it may not pencil out. I am also concerned by the lack of incentives. And I'm curious, because I'm, again, that we might end up with a de facto moratorium without any incentives. So I'm curious as to what other people's thoughts are on, is there any way we could include some of this discussion as conditions within this? And kind of pass it on to council? So what are other people thinking?
I appreciate that, Chair Braunice. I think, you know, at least I feel like for myself, maybe, you know, hopefully the three of you feel the same. I don't think we need to see this again necessarily. And so I guess I maybe might look at staff to, you know, what would...
I think you have a couple options in front of you. I think you could adopt it as drafted. You could adopt it with conditions, you know? I mean, this is your recommendation. If you say, you know, want to recommend that a certain section get revised, you could include that as a condition of the approval of your resolution. City council will get all of this information. They don't have to, you know, they don't have to accept your conditions. Or similar to June 9th, you could, you know, recommend that staff bring forth a resolution with other findings, or a resolution for denial with findings that you all consider at the next meeting, too. So you have a number of options. I'm not sure if there's others that... Yep.
You know, I would just add, there's maybe a little bit of movement as far as how specific your conditions need to be, of what you're comfortable with. I don't know, you know, you could recommend approval, you could recommend approval if incentives are established without defining the incentives, is another option.
As far as a condition that would encourage the reevaluation of the 30% number?
Any of the provisions of the ordinance are under consideration. So I think you could include any conditions that you desire related to the ordinance.
Maybe where you're heading, Chair, too, oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, please.
Maybe where you're heading, Chair, is, you know, at least for me, I could get behind a motion to approve the ordinance along the lines of leaving the percentage blank for now, pending the results of the housing study that we do. And then also making a recommendation or condition that the approval that we make of this ordinance is conditioned on the inclusion of some of the incentives that would also come out of a housing study. So it's kind of, it seems a little odd to be approving something and then, you know, making these recommendations that a future study help inform. But that maybe helps one, in one way.
Yeah, and I don't know if we would reference the study as a milestone necessarily, but an evaluation or reevaluation of the percentage and perhaps also...
Yes, fair.
I'm really curious to hear your thoughts. Yeah, please.
So I guess I just don't fully understand the urgency of approving this at this time, because isn't it true that if there is any rezoning right now of commercial to residential, the requirement will be at the 12% level? So... So any new development today will still have to develop 12% inclusionary. When you look at the neighboring cities, that's, you know, compared to Denver, which was, I think, 10%, that's still pretty high. So I just, I don't totally understand why we're rushing to recommend this before additional data is available that justifies a different threshold.
Yeah, Commissioner Grants, please.
Yeah, I mean, I really appreciate that we don't have all the answers to this right now, and we don't, unfortunately, don't have the housing study. But I do, I did look at the Boulder County 2017 strategy, and the goals are to meet the 12% by 2035. And if you look at where we are along that map, if I have the time, I'll scroll down to find the place on that study to read you exactly what it was. But just for right now, as I say, it seems like we are already a little bit behind in this. And with the way that ordinances and changes seem to move, from my perspective, through, to get things onto our work plan, seems like that was the opportunity that we might miss, getting the city council to put this back onto a work plan when they have so many different pressing issues. That I wouldn't say that we necessarily need to wait for the housing study. And I don't want to talk too much, but I also feel like there's, that what Anne Marie Jensen said as an expert in this field, she supports this, and she believes that this is going to lead to additional housing units, because we're not going to allow the fee-in lieu. So if there is new construction, it will include the 30% actual units being built. And like I said before, there's not really a, this is, this is a big incentive allowing that path forward to do the rezoning. So I hope that addresses like the reason why I think we should do this now.
I felt like I heard Anne Marie Jensen also express concern about the 30% rate, though.
Yeah.
Without incentives, yeah.
I guess if there was, again, I just raised this issue, if there was some real concern that, well, I guess for me, this is a, this is an issue that has been building since, you know, decades here in Louisville now. I don't know that, and I would really like for us to try and achieve a successful goal by 2030, 2035. I don't know. I mean, we're, we've got a lot of work to do to meet that 12% goal here in Louisville. And so every minute that we have is important. At the same time, if we set up a program that doesn't get utilized, we're also not going to, so... And I guess if we were really, if I'm going to say if city council was really worried that we would be missing some upcoming properties, I think they could just put a moratorium on residential... I don't know exactly how they would do it, but the rezoning of commercial to residential until we get ordinance sorted out. So that would be one potential way of making sure that we didn't lose opportunities, I guess.
At least, that's sort of procedurally a very interesting spot. Yeah, so at this point, so do conditions do it for you, or no? And I'm thinking conditions related both to percentage, and it would sound, I don't know what it would sound, would we, would we want to, if we, would we want to mention a number if we had a condition? Or would it be a generic reevaluation of that 30%? And then also incentives? Or, because actually, to me, it doesn't feel like it's all that bad with these two issues, except for these two issues. So the framework, I think, has been developed that that's in the right direction. My concern also, right, again, is we're overshooting, and it becomes a virtual moratorium. So I also sense that council wants to move forward on something like this.
Sure.
And what role do we play in, as this body, in recommendations to council? Do we end up with a stronger role in coming with some conditions surrounding these two issues? I think, are there anything else other than incentives and the number? Potentially, I don't know. Yeah.
So I, if we're talking about conditions, I guess I'm not totally clear on how that would play out if it's tied to, or not tied to. I guess where I'm coming from is I don't want to recommend anything that's binding before having the data that would justify what's financially feasible. So I guess my question is, with the conditions, are we recommending a condition that requires reevaluating once that data, once that analysis is available?
But not the, I'm sorry. But when you're saying once that analysis is available, you're not saying to wait for the housing study, which could be put off for a year?
Right, because it may be, it seems very likely that at the earliest it would be this time next year, that we would have the housing study complete.
That feels, yeah, potential. I mean, the study itself will take months.
So is there enough good in as drafted, save for these two issues in particular, that we would consider approving it with conditions? Right, this is different, again, because it's code, and it's actually being driven by council, kind of as their instructions to staff. And not like a normal, where we have an applicant who's coming before us with a proposal. So either way, could be a strong message either to council or... Yeah, I mean, I have no doubt that we're all committed to finding, or to having more inclusionary housing in Louisville. So...
Can I speak to just the concern about the data a little bit more? Because I feel like what wasn't in our package last time was that 2017 regional housing strategy. And I learned a lot by reading that this time. And I do think that in looking at the different, the chart that Ms. Ritchie showed us, that showed us the different percentages for required set-asides for the different communities, that we are most similar to Boulder. Because what this regional housing study showed was that between 2005 and 2017, other communities, like Lafayette, had like 48% increase in home values. But both Louisville and Boulder saw over 70% increase in our home values. So that makes me feel like that, and the fact that, you know, we're included in this study, that the way that this strategy already kind of includes Louisville, and this is showing that we have the market for, we have the market, the houses are so valuable here, that there will be a market even with a higher percentage, if we allow the rezoning. So I thought that that made us, that Louisville and Boulder being so close together, sorry, I'm not articulating it, because I'm not reading it directly from the study, but we did see that huge increase in property values that the other areas of Boulder County did not see. I was wondering if that data point helps, you know, because some of the data in that, in that strategy, you know, is some of the stuff that we might be looking for in a housing study, though it's not local, did have a lot of data about Louisville. I was just wondering if that satisfied your need for more data a little bit more than we had from the last meeting?
I guess my take, when I read the Denver analysis where they did a feasibility study, was that the strong recommendation is when you want to increase inclusionary housing in a community, that you really need to have a local level analysis and feasibility study. So with that in mind, and a lot of the different recommendations that were in the Denver study about how to make it a win-win for both sides, made me, makes me feel like we're not yet there in terms of the information that we have in Louisville to make a sound decision and recommendation.
As far as potential language, were you going to say something, Director?
I was just wondering, you know, if the commission is leaning towards not recommending approval of the ordinances drafted because you need additional information, I'm just wondering from a procedural standpoint if somebody could make a motion that, you know, and you could put in the motion that you are, you know, conceptually supportive, but you want, you know, you recommend that the city council not take action until this additional information is brought forward and studied by the planning commission. You can maybe make a motion to that effect. We could check with, and then your motion could be your recommendation to city council. I'm just thinking really strictly, you're obligated to make a recommendation on the ordinance presented.
Right.
So, but you could, you would be making a recommendation of denial, in effect, but saying, but articulating that it's not because you're fully opposed conceptually to this, but that you feel like it needs more information. So you could have, so it would technically be a recommendation of denial, but articulating your support for the elements that are, you would support, and your reason why you want this additional information. So it doesn't have to be just, hey, we don't support this, we're recommending denial, if that's helpful. So I think that's just a little nuance on that third option that Lisa talked about on the recommendation of denial.
That, what you just described, Rob, is really appealing to me. So I might need you to express that again. But anyway, I'll just say that and let others...
So that's language you guys would come up with between now and our next meeting, essentially?
I'm going to throw this out there, too, that maybe you make a motion that, articulating this, and I think we can check with the city attorney if she's going to ask us to come back with a resolution, or if your motion will suffice to go to city council.
Commissioner Grants?
Yeah, I would much prefer that we make a recommendation of approval, and in between, when we hear this and when city council hears it, that we ask them to look into some more information. And perhaps if we just, if they need more information that would delay their hearing, but not require it to come back to our body again, that they would be able to, and I would like to make, I think that, I'd rather we made our motion to approve it and with conditions. So that they, and maybe one of the conditions could be looking for that additional information. I don't think we're that far, because there's so much information in that regional housing plan, and also available through ECHO, there may be available through ECHO, the organization, for East Boulder County housing.
But it's, Director Zakaria, I'm kind of picking up a little bit that this conditions of saying that 30% doesn't work for us, is not really a condition...
Right, I think, I think there's a couple different paths forward, if I can maybe process a little bit out loud, because it is complex, is that you would make a recommendation of approval, and you could have a condition that, you know, that there be a feasibility study done to verify the correct percentage, as well as adoption of incentives to... Because usually those studies match incentives. They don't, they're usually not done in isolation. You say, okay, what incentives help get you to a certain percent, as aggressive as you want to try to be? So you could say that, you know, you recommend approval conditional on a study being done, and that you don't recommend that they take final action until the feasibility analysis is done. And then I think another option is to recommend approval, but not suggest that they delay action, but that they fully consider the concern of the percentage and the incentives, which I think is more what Commissioner Grants is looking for. So those are just a couple options.
Curious, on the thoughts of actually going to the first option there of requiring, or, I mean, our statement being strongly worded that the study be performed, how you feel about that also?
That, yeah. I prefer that one.
Yeah.
I would prefer that, too. So the notes I took was that that would be, the condition would be on conducting a feasibility study, and that city council doesn't take action until that feasibility study is done. That would be...
So if that was a condition, and that the feasibility study addresses both incentives and the percentage, the appropriate percentage for Lewisville, so, all right. Any other conditions we'd want to roll in there? We're writing on the fly, yeah.
Those would be the main two.
Yeah. All right, maybe, maybe we can feel about it right? Okay, that we could do that as a...
Yeah, I was just, just trying to clarify a little bit how we would, how we would, that we would need to differentiate the feasibility study from the housing study in drafting our condition, that this is something that could, would this be something that would be done by staff, or would this be something that we would, that we're asking council to contract out, and, you know? I'm just not sure what we're looking for.
We would not be able to do that level of feasibility study, you'd have to hire economic experts to do that feasibility study. I think by leaving it open-ended and just saying, "A feasibility study," then it could happen in any number of different ways, including the housing study, we've already, we're already planning versus a separate effort. But just to be clear, I don't think our staff could do a full study to the level of the Denver study.
All right. Any additional thoughts, concerns? How are you feeling?
I think that works.
Yeah, we could support that, all right. I also, I mean, at this point, I'm in favor of that. I think that it's a pretty strong message, almost so strong as to be concerning, perhaps, but, but I also find myself grounded in that space, too, of, I really think we got to get it right. I don't think we want to end up with a de facto moratorium, and I am concerned that we would, That said, I would entertain a motion.
And if I could, just procedurally, I would recommend that you perhaps approve the resolution with amendments to the resolution reflecting your conditions, and then we can write those into the resolution for signature.
So typically approved with conditions, and the condition states that we feel that, so where does the amendment come into play here?
Yeah, let me try to restate it. So there was a, there was a resolution presented to you in your packet that recommends approval, so you could, so you would be making a motion to adopt the resolution with amendments, and then you would direct the amendments to be however you articulate the condition, and then we could, as staff, draft the resolution with the written condition, and then that's just part of the record that goes to city council to reflect your condition. So it would be, it would be in the minutes, but it would also be in writing. Hopefully that makes sense, yeah.
Yes. Although we've never run into this procedurally of adding an amendment, and then the amendment points to the condition.
Typically, the language, I think, what you're, right, unless you want to amend any of the findings in the resolution, you're right, like norm, like more typically, you would just adopt a resolution with the following condition. If you do want to make any amendments to the findings in the resolution, or anything else, you know, there could be amendments within the body. So we would probably review it for kind of any inconsistencies in the body of the resolution as well, is that what you're thinking, Director?
Well, no, I think we would do this, I think, I think we're talking, I think we're saying the same thing. I mean, if you were doing a land use case, and you wanted to add conditions, and you made a motion, you would just say, "We want these conditions." But all I'm saying is, we would then write those conditions into the resolution for the land use case. So the resolution that actually goes in the record would include those. So whatever condition you make, we'll put it in the resolution, if that makes sense.
Yes. Fantastic, thanks. We'll see if that works. Yes, all right. With that, then, I would entertain a motion with the conditions.
I'll try this.
Sure.
I would like to motion that we recommend approval of a draft ordinance to amend Chapter 17.76 of the Lewisville Municipal Code to require 30% inclusionary housing when a property is rezoned, one, rezoned from a non-residential zone district to a residential zone district, or two, approved for residential uses through a general development plan, or three, approved for residential uses through a special review use in a commercial zone district. And I'd like to recommend approval of this with condition that we do a, that we request that city council complete a further study on the feasibility of the 30% number.
And incentives?
And look into adding additional incentives for developers.
Is that enough for, given our conversation, that you can include?
Adequate, from my perspective.
Yeah, I think that's clear.
You want those as separate conditions?
I think it's fine, it's up to you, if the commission is comfortable with the language.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
This is just a tiny nuance, but is it stronger if we add the wording that council not take action until, I think just those words of not take action?
As part of it.
Yeah, do you want me to rephrase it, to say it back? Because that'd be kind of hard. That is, that sounds good to me.
Okay.
That council not take action until, the condition is that council not take action until they've done a further analysis on the 30% number, and considered additional incentives, such as the ones that were mentioned during this hearing.
Great. All right, was that a roll call vote, please?
A second.
Ah, yes, thank you.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz?
Yes.
Chair Bronis?
Yes. The motion carries. Thank you all, thank you all for joining us this evening, and we look forward to this first unit getting built. With that, then, actually, we'll take a five-minute break, and reconvene in five. Great, we will reconvene this evening's meeting. I'll now open the public hearing on a request for a wildland urban interface PUD fence exceptions. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission's staff. After this presentation, members of the public who have joined this meeting by computer or telephone, or in person, may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak, and is on the computer, is asked to use the raise hand function, if participating by computer, or star nine if calling in by telephone. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing, no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter, may approve, approve with conditions, deny or continue at a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record, all testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Do we have proper notification?
Yes, this code amendment was noticed per municipal code requirements.
Do we have any disclosures? Saying none?
All right, thank you, commissioners. Tonight, we're here to consider an ordinance amendment related to the recent Marshall Fire. So just acknowledging to anyone listening, or listening after the fact, that, you know, the Marshall Fire was a pretty devastating experience for many folks in the community, those directly impacted, as well as the rest of the community participating and experiencing this. So it ultimately resulted in the loss and major damage to roughly 600 homes. The facilitated learning assessment, which is underway by the U.S. Forest Service and some partner agencies, is still underway. So we don't have the entirety of kind of all of the lessons learned, and how the fire spread, and, you know, kind of the impact, and all of the factors that went into it. But we do know, just from the experience of residents, from the experience of our firefighters, as well as visible evidence, that fire was, fire spread was caused from numerous factors, numerous factors, you know, primarily here was wind and vegetative patterns, but we do notice that wood fences contributed to fire spread. So just want to kind of preface it with that, that wood fences were part of this. Going backwards a little bit, as far as fence regulations in the city more broadly, fence regulations are covered in our zoning code. In the building code, there's minimal design standards just related to kind of structural construction of the fence, but essentially, the design parameters for fences are regulated in zoning. All citywide standards are located in Section 1716120, originally adopted in 1973, last amended in 1995. In addition to this, certain PUDs, it contains fence standards over and above the underlying fence standards in the code. And these apply to various fences throughout the development, can range from certain perimeters to really every fence that gets constructed within a property. The predominant materials that are specified in these PUDs are, you know, some form of wood, like a six-foot cedar, a five-foot cedar, or California chain link, and both of those use wood as their structural system. Wildland urban interface, or WUI, is a term that folks in Lewisville are talking about a lot more following the fire. Wildland urban interface codes are commonly adopted in forested and mountainous areas, including in Boulder County. And so typically, in grassland areas and plains communities, it's more uncommon to have wildland urban interface codes, and Lewisville, to date, has not adopted any. Boulder County only recently adopted these for their grassland areas over the past few months, following Marshall Fire. So a lot of communities are still learning the differences for how wildland urban interface codes affect communities like Lewisville. As we know, this was a pretty unique event, and so we're still having a lot of lessons learned. WUI codes generally apply to both building materials, as well as design of structures, and they can apply to both landscape and property maintenance as well, so kind of the condition of the property. To date, as I noted, the city has not adopted WUI standards. There's a lot of best practice, there's a lot of examples for codes. California has a lot of codes underway, Colorado, as well, as I mentioned, Boulder, Boulder County. So we have a lot of examples to look at. Primarily, though, within these codes, the first zero to five feet away from the structure is the most critical zone, and that area... And that area, obviously, is where the fire within that area is where the structure is most likely to caught, catch on fire. As you bleed out from that five feet, the requirements become less strict, and they're generally related to kind of keeping your trees brood, landscape and brush down, things like that. But within Zone 1, in the zero to five feet, this is FEMA guidance, but it says, remove all combustible materials, such as wood mulches, dead or dry vegetation, leaves or pine needles from roofs and gutters, as well as tree, tree branches that hang over the roof and eaves. But when we look at the structure itself, Zone 1 includes the structure, deck, patio, or balcony, as well as fencing that is attached to the home. And this Zone 1 area is really intended to be the ignition-resistant area. And so this is why we have tailored this ordinance to the fences within the zero to five feet areas. This is the most area at risk. So this draft ordinance is a citywide ordinance for any PUD within the entire city, not just fire-affected neighborhoods, that would exempt the requirement for fences within five feet where a PUD requires a combustible material, such as wood. Homeowner can opt out and construct a fence with a non-combustible material. Additionally, we have the following design parameters, so that the fence that they install matches the height limit that's set forth in the planned unit development, as well as it matches the design intent for openness or solid construction. And really, those minimal design standards are really just intended to carry forth whatever the overall design intent of that fence was, that it matches to that degree. But we're not specifying, you know, specific design materials, or really, you know, there's a lot of discretion from the homeowner as to what would be considered non-combustible to their comfort level, right? So certain materials are somewhat combustible, like maybe Trex or vinyl. Those materials will burn, but they transfer fire to a structure less readily than wood. So we're not, the ordinance as drafted isn't real specific on actual materials. And this, also, I just want to note that this ordinance doesn't require homeowners to make any changes. So this is just an exemption. So at this point, it's, it's an optional, and it would be at their discretion. Just want to make one quick note. There are numerous HOAs, numerous developments with covenants that may not be consistent with this. And so those neighbors with homeowners, or with HOAs, that have covenants that are more restrictive than this, those covenants would still apply. And so the city can't override a covenants relate, covenant related to a fence. We don't have that authority. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. We're recommending approval as drafted. I, we have no one in the audience, I'm not sure if we have anyone at this point online for public comment.
Excuse me, there's one person online, but they have not raised their hand for public comment yet.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. It is open up to public comment right now. If we could have a motion to include the emails that we received as addendum one?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. With that, then, um, we can move into deliberations, essentially. Do we have any additional questions?
I would just make sure the public knew they had an opportunity to raise their hand at this time?
Yeah, okay.
No hands raised? Okay.
No hands raised.
Yeah, and then happy to take any questions before you move into deliberations, if you have any.
Great. Thanks. Do we, any questions? No? All right. Seeing none. I'll now clo- close the public hearing, and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to begin?
I'll go ahead.
Great. Commissioner Krantz.
I just wanted to, yeah, this sounds like a very reasonable thing. I don't know the science well enough, but it sounds like it's been well researched that five feet is actually enough. And I just wanted to acknowledge the letters that we did receive, because I just got a chance to look at them. It looks like there's five letters, and four are asking for this, for us to make this exception. And I think somebody in there was asking if we could make it an even, give an exception for an even larger area. And I can understand that, given like the fear. I didn't have my house burned, but it's, I can kind of, I was reading it, and I could understand that somebody may want to have just that, even though, you know, regardless of the science, they may really want to have that extra level of protection, and would be open to making it larger as requested by one of these emails. There was one person who also didn't think that this, did not think this was a good idea, just wanted to point that out too, because they thought that the fences were not necessarily a factor, and it was the extreme winds and heat. I don't know that it makes a difference in our deliberations, but I just wanted to acknowledge the public comments.
Thank you, yeah, very much. That's very much appreciated. Any other thoughts, especially discussion regarding whether five feet is right for now or not?
I'm, I find myself in support of the ordinance as drafted at this point. I, I think I see us taking, taking maybe a, a series of steps over the next, you know, amount of time, once we get the fire study, the name is escaping me, but once we get more information on the kinds of things that allowed the fire to spread in our town, I see us maybe, maybe making some additional changes to our building codes, but I think this is a great first start. And, yeah, so I, I find myself in support of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Osterman.
I agree with the commissioner comments shared thus far. I support this and think it is great to give residents who are rebuilding the option to build back in a smarter way.
Well, and everybody at that point, too, because it is applicable citywide, so. So, I also find myself in support of it at this time, as written. We'll, I guess, kind of time will determine whether five feet is the precisely right number or not, but I think that's a great place to start. Certainly, all the research that has been provided thus far indicates that is a good place for, at least for now. So, any additional discussion? I would entertain a motion.
I would recommend approval of Resolution Number 11, Series 2022, a resolution recommending approval of an ordinance amending Lewisville Municipal Code, Code Title 17, concerning fence regulations within planned unit developments.
I'll second it. A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Osterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yes.
Chair Bronis.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for your work on this. I know it is one of a million different things you're juggling right now, so much appreciated. All right. With that, then, we just move into planning commission comments. Anybody have anything they want to share? Or we can move into staff comments.
Sure. I don't have anything specific. I do want to just note, we've been making a couple staff changes internally in our department. Planner Kim Bauer, who you've seen from time to time, has moved over into a role in our building department. So you may or may not ever see her at planning commission again. And next month, we'll be really, really excited to share a new staff member, and I think it's probably a little early to share, but we do have a new planner that we'll be onboarding here soon and get her position filled. So just, there'll be a little bit shuffling.
Great.
I don't have anything else. Director, are there any other updates? Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. So we do have a couple of items for our next meeting, tentatively scheduled.
The Redtail Ridge application, I believe, is tentative still?
Yeah, yeah, it's tentative, but it's potential that there will be a preliminary and final plat for Redtail Ridge at the next meeting. We are working potentially on a temporary use permit, which there is a, you can extend temporary use permit timeframes beyond an, there's an administrative limit, and so there's going to be a request to have a longer temporary use permit. That'll probably be on the agenda next month as well.
All right. Interesting. Yes, tune in next month. All right. With that, then, I entertain much to adjourn. Thank you. I believe we're all in favor, all in favor? Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Recording stopped.